One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
He had called and let Peggy know a couple of weeks ago.
Roll call please.
Mr. Alt. Mr. Beistall. Mr. Calero.
Here.
Mrs. Love. Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Polakowski.
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Here.
Mrs. Shipley.
Mr. Bass.
Here. Six present. Mrs. Love called and said that she was unable to make it this evening. Citizens comments?
We have no comment cards, Mr. President.
Thank you. Also to add to that, Mrs. Shipley did say ahead of time she wouldn't be here.
As did Mr. Alt.
And Mr. Alt. Minutes, approval of minutes?
It is recommended that the Board approve the minutes of the June 30, July 10, July 12, and July 31, 2014 meetings.
Motion? Motion by Mr. Polakowski, second. Second by Mr. Beistall. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Business and finance funds accounts?
It is recommended that the Board approve the June 2014 Treasuries Report, June and July 2014 bills payable.
Need a motion? Motion by Mr. Miller, second by Mr. Calero.
Could we, Mr. President, amend that motion also because you received this evening the July Treasuries Report, so could we add that as well?
Is that okay, Mr. Miller?
I didn't hear what he said.
We have the July Treasuries Report as well.
Ah, good, okay.
Which is not on that motion.
Sure, gladly.
Is that okay, Mr. President?
That's fine.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Roll call please.
Mr. Beistall.
Yes.
Mr. Calero.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Bass.
Yes. Motion passes six, zero, with three absent. Old business, interscholastic athletics, policy 123.
It is recommended that the Board adopt the revisions to policy 123, interscholastic athletics, which has been posted for a period of 30 days.
Need a motion? Motion by Mr. Beistall, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Calero.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Beistall.
Yes.
Mr. Bass.
Yes, motion passes six, zero, with three absent.
And in conjunction with the athletic policy, Dr. Scott and his committee have been working diligently on a set of administrative regulations that will back that policy up, so I'm going to pass those around right now. Right now, this is a work in progress. There's still some more work to be done on this, but at least this will give you an idea of the direction that they are going with their administrative manual for this policy.
FMLA policy, policy 435.
It's recommended that the Board adopt the revisions to policy 435, FMLA, which has been posted for 30 days.
Need a motion? Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second. Second by Mr. Polakowski, questions? Roll call.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Beistall.
Yes.
Mr. Calero.
Yes.
Mr. Bass.
Yes, motion passes six, zero, with three absent. New business, PSBA voting delegate assembly?
This time, we would entertain a discussion in terms of who you would like to have as your voting delegates to the PSBA convention, which is held in October.
I suggested Gail Rhodes last week.
Mrs. Rhodes, do you?
Yeah, that's one.
She's our PSBA representative, so it would be a natural.
Let's see, Mr. Miller.
Mr. Miller, you accept that?
I'm willing. If somebody else wishes to do it, I'm legislatively liaison, so in that sense, but I've done it various times and I'll be very, this is the case of very, but it's a very educational experience. If some new person who has not been there would like to do it, you get a sense of what the PSBA, and I don't know if it's Mr. Calero or one of you two would be interested. You get a sense of what the state, and that's still, you can still go to the convention or anyone can begin, but so just noting that.
Appreciate that.
I'm willing to go.
Yes, no, maybe so.
No, I said, that's why I prefer Levi.
Thank you. So then, it's recommended that the Board appoint Gail Rhodes and Levi Miller as voting delegates for the Southmoreland School District to the PSBA Voting Delegates Assembly.
Need a motion?
Make motion.
Motion by Mr. Polakowski, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Beistall, questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Beistall.
Yes.
Mr. Calero.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Bass.
Yes, motion passes six, zero, with three absent. St. Vincent Prevention Projects Contribution?
It is recommended that the Board approve a contribution of $1,020 to fund the St. Vincent Prevention Projects activities in the Southmoreland School District for the 2014-15 school year.
Need a motion?
I saw move.
Motion by Mr. Miller, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes, questions? Roll call please.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Beistall.
Yes.
Mr. Calero.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mr. Bass.
Yes, motion passes six, zero, with three absent. Belfair Jewish Children's Bureau?
It is recommended that the Board approve an agreement for provision of special education and certain related services between the Southmoreland School District and the Belfair Jewish Children's Bureau for the 2014-15 school year at a cost of $84,500 for tuition and services to be provided for 195 days.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Calero, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Beistall.
Yes.
Mr. Calero.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Bass.
Yes, motion passes six, zero, with three absent. Solicitor's workshop?
It is recommended that the Board approve the attendance of the solicitor at the Solicitor's Workshop at the Annual Convention of the Pennsylvania School Board Association in Hershey, Wednesday, October 22, 2014, at a registration fee for the conference and for the school law workshop of $299, which is the early registration rate that's in effect until September 4, 2014, and an overnight room for October 21 and 22, 2014, at $175 plus tax. That's the lodge rate plus the usual and customary meal and transportation expenses.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second by Mr. Polakowski, questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Calero.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Beistall.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes six, zero, with three absent. Need an executive?
Yes.
Need a motion for executive session for personnel?
No.
Need an executive session for personnel, please?
Yes, I think that would...
Give her, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Personnel, supplementals for being?
It is recommended that the Board approve Bob Springer as Assistant Director, Michael Guzic as brass instructor, Brent Roberts as percussion instructor, Anna Marie McChoice as color guard instructor for the 2014-15 school year.
Need a motion? Motion by Mr. Beistall, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Calero, questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Beistall.
Yes.
Mr. Calero.
Yes.
Mr. Bass.
Yes, motion passes six, zero, with three absent. California University of Pennsylvania Athletic Trainer's Intern?
It is recommended that the Board approve an agreement with California University of Pennsylvania to appoint an athletic trainer intern with Southmoreland School District for the 2014-15 school year, and this individual would work with the trainer that is supplied to us through Accela Health.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Beistall.
Yes.
Mr. Calero.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Bass.
Yes, motion passes six, zero, with three absent. Grade four elementary teacher.
It's recommended that the Board approve the hiring of Abby Cesario as a grade four elementary teacher at SES at Step M1, starting salary of $39,760 per the collective bargaining agreement between the Southmoreland School District and the Southmoreland Education Association.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Calero, second by Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Roll call please.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Beistall.
Mr. Calero.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mr. Bass.
Yes, motion passes six, zero, with three absent. It's recommended...
You don't want to serve him or Jack?
I'm just gonna, yeah. Won't be the first thing that flew off the desk today. It's recommended that the Board approve the hiring of John Saunders as a high school English teacher at Step B2, starting salary $38,898 per the collective bargaining agreement between the Southmoreland School District and the Southmoreland Education Association. Need a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Miller, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Beistall. Mr. Calero.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Bass.
No, motion passes five, one, with three absent. Middle school Spanish teacher.
It's recommended that the Board approve the hiring of John Stevens as a middle school Spanish teacher at Step B1 as per the collective bargaining agreement between the Southmoreland School District and the Southmoreland Education Association.
Need a motion? Motion by Mr. Beistall, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes, questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Calero.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Beistall.
Mr. Bass.
Yes, motion passes six, zero, with three absent. Nurses assistant at the primary center.
It's recommended that the Board approve the hiring of Amanda Vialma as Nurses Assistant for the Primary Center at a starting salary of $25,000 plus benefits. Salary will be paid through federal funds.
Motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Calero, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes, questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Beistall.
Yes.
Mr. Calero.
Yes.
Mr. Bass.
Yes, motion passes six, zero, with three absent. Team leaders?
It's recommended that the Board approve the following team leaders. Kim Kelly as mathematics team leader at the high school, Ronald Sekercheck as fifth-grade team leader, Amy Zimmerman as first-grade team leader, Jennifer Teraski as sixth-grade team leader.
Motion? Motion by Mr. Miller, second. Second by Mr. Beistall, questions?
Just a question, is this now completed, the teams are all the leaders named at this point?
The second grade is still open.
Roll call please.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Beistall.
Yes.
Mr. Calero.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Bass.
Yes, motion passes six, zero, with three absent. Elementary autistic support aide. It's recommended that the Board approve Desiree Pollard as an elementary autistic support aide at a salary of $12,730. Need a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Calero, questions? Roll call please.
Mrs. Rhodes, yes. Mr. Beistall.
Yes.
Mr. Calero.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mr. Bass.
Yes, motion passes six, zero, with three absent. Grooms Transit?
It is recommended that the Board approve the list of Grooms Transit Incorporated doing business as Quest Transit drivers for the 2014-2015 school year, and that list will be included in the minutes of the meeting.
Need a motion? Motion by Mr. Beistall, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Beistall.
Yes.
Mr. Calero.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Bass.
Yes, motion passes six, zero, with three absent. Day-to-day substitutes for the 2014-15 school year.
It is recommended that the Board approve the list of day-to-day substitutes for the 2014-15 school year, and again, that list will also be a part of the minutes for the meeting.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Calero.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Beistall.
Yes.
Mr. Bass.
Yes, motion passes six, zero, with three absent. YEA NHS supplemental cosponsors?
It's recommended that the Board approve Chris Fabian and Carrie Bischer as cosponsors for the National Honor Society Supplemental and the Youth Education Association Supplemental for the high school during the 2014-15 school year.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Miller, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes, questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Beistall.
Yes.
Mr. Calero.
Yes.
Mr. Bass.
Yes, motion passes six, zero, with three absent. Assistant cross-country coach?
It's recommended that the Board authorize administration to post an advertise for an opening for an assistant cross-country coach.
Need a motion? Motion by Mr. Beistall. Need a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes, questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Beistall.
Yes.
Mr. Calero.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Bass.
Yes, motion passes six, zero, with three absent. Resignation of the assistant middle school girls soccer coach?
It's recommended that the Board accept the resignation of Dwayne Huffman as assistant middle school girls soccer coach and authorize administration to post and advertise the position.
Motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Miller, second. Second by Mr. Beistall, questions? Roll call please.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Beistall.
Yes.
Mr. Calero.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mr. Bass.
Yes, motion passes six, zero, with three absent. Need a motion to table assistant middle school girls soccer coach? Motion by Mr. Beistall, second.
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 Motion.
All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six, zero, with three absent. CWCTC report?
Yes, we met on, on July 18th for a short meeting. There was one, three items on the agenda. We hired Eric Westerndorf as the full-time principal, and we hired Dr. Andrew Crippiani as the full-time sports therapy and exercise science instructor. That's a new program for this year. Third item was authorizing administration, develop an FRP for the cosmetology ventilation system. She presented the August meeting. You guys remember, the first time we voted on that Act 39 project, the ventilation system was gonna be already done, but for budget reasons, that was taken away, so now they're gonna try to get it done.
Thank you.
Just a question, so will they be coming to us to include it? Is it coming out of the operating, operational budget, or is it a special?
There were some things in the Act 39 that were not replaced with the, I forget what they got, the chillers, so we're gonna use that money for the cosmetology.
So they're not coming back to us for additional funds, I mean, supporting schools? Okay.
Any other questions or comments? WIE report? Mr. Love is not here. PSBA liaison report?
Mine's gonna be short and sweet, just reminding everybody about the PSBA conference in Hershey, and that occurs October 21st to the 24th, so if any of us are interested in going, besides Mr. Miller or myself, we probably should be contacting Peggy to make the reservations and so forth, so that's all I have for tonight.
Again, if you look back at the motions for Mr. Potonic's authorization, there is an early bird deadline date there.
I think it was September 4.
Which is September 4.
Yeah.
So if you're planning to go and could get Peggy that information before September 4.
I think you might have till like the middle of September. I think I meant to write 14 and it came out 4 or something like that, so you may have another week or so after that, but not much.
Right. I would think the sooner that you make up your mind and make reservations, the better, so.
Thanks.
It's kind of related to this, is the report here that Dr. Mollner, that you gave us here, this three-pager, is this what you presented at the, our local legislature?
Right, yeah, and I'll be talking about that in my super, yeah.
Perfect.
Superintendent's report? Sure. Couple items to walk on, if you don't mind. This one, I apologize, I just forgot to put it on the agenda, but we have received one bid for the sale of the obsolete and unusable 1991 Ford Econoline van. It's recommended that the van be sold to the sole bidder, Smalley Auto Wreckers of Dunbar, for a cash price of $210.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Calero, second. Second by Mr. Beistall, questions? Roll call please.
Audience.
Any audience comment? Roll call please.
Mr. Beistall.
Yes.
Mr. Calero.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Bass.
Yes, motion passes six, zero, with three absent.
I believe Peggy gave you this information this evening, it just came in, but good news again for Southmoreland here, Katie Kimmel, who's one of our junior high school students, she's a clarinetist, and she was selected to participate in the National Music Educators Association All-National Concert Band. As far as we know, Katie's the first student from Southmoreland that has ever been selected to participate at the national level, so that's a pretty elite honor. Again, Peggy gave you some information, and we're asking permission for an overnight field trip for Katie and for instructor Jamie Gore, that will be to Nashville, Tennessee, from Sunday, October 26th through Wednesday, October 29th. Mr. Krawcheck, do you have anything to add there that I didn't cover?
No, this is, you probably often heard, basically, there are... On a yearly basis, these students made all district, all state, all east, all national. This is part of that process, the all-national, I believe, is offered, or is every other year, so this is a really big honor for the music program here, as well as this young lady.
Do you have any idea how many across the country are actually selected?
I do, I do not know that number.
This is really, I, she's a junior.
Right.
That's great.
She's pretty impressive.
Yeah, I'd say.
Any more questions or comments? Need a motion? Motion by Mr. Polakowski, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Calero, questions? Questions from the audience? Roll call.
Mr. Calero.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Beistall.
Yes.
Mr. Bass.
Yes, motion passes six, zero, with three absent.
In special education, one of the requirements that we as a school district have is to develop a transition plan for students who are turning 14 years of age or older during during a given school year, and the transition plan is designed to help prepare students for life after high school. Sometimes that is life in competitive employment, sometimes that's life in non-competitive employment, such as a sheltered situation. Also, will there be post-secondary education, and if so, where will that be, what will that look like, and what will living arrangements be? So in some cases, we're, you know, teaching kids, you know, how to look for an apartment and how to do those kinds of things, so those are all part of transition plans which are required in a student's IEP. And because that's mandated, it's occasionally monitored, and the Department of Education recently monitored our transition plan and did find a couple of areas that needed tweaked a little bit, and we were able to do that in pretty short order. We wrote a corrective action plan, and we recently received a letter that commended our department for the plan, and informing us that the district is now in full compliance with all transition requirements, so we were quite pleased to get that letter. Couple of weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago, several district superintendents were invited along with several business leaders to testify at the House Democratic Policy Committee Hearing on Education and Economic Development that was held at Menneson High School. Again, there were about six or seven superintendents, six or seven business leaders, the new president of Westmoreland County Community College was there, and there were, I want to say, eight or nine members of the House of Representatives there, and we provided testimony. A lot of what the superintendents talked about naturally was school funding, so I just gave you a copy of the testimony that I shared for your information. I mentioned the president of WCCC knew Dr. Tuesday Stanley is her name, and she's actually having a meeting tomorrow with education leaders from around the area to talk about ways that the community college can interface with local school districts and provide services to us and to our students, so I'm pretty anxious to go to that meeting and have that discussion with fellow superintendents and Dr. Stanley. And the last item I have for you is the Scotty Wade Paving Project. I know you had a special meeting on July thirty-one, and we had hoped that it would have been underway and possibly finished by now. Once we, you know, had your vote, we notified the company that they were the successful bidder, they had to get the contract through their legal department and get their bonding in order, which all has now occurred. They delivered those executed contracts to us today, and tell me that they are planning to start the project next Thursday, that will be August twenty-first, and expect to have it finished on August twenty-second. So, and our rule is, the road will be open for buses and kids on the first day of school, so teachers at SES might be coming up North High Street off of Arthur Avenue for those first couple of in-service days, and we can deal with that, but we can't do that with hordes and hordes of parents and cars and school buses, so if they're not finished, they're going to have to make some arrangement to get that road open during the day, and they can work after hours and on weekends. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Solicitors Report?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, Mr. Potonik reminded me of something. Generally, when we have a project like this going, the Board would authorize the superintendent, and I think I do have a blanket authorization on the books to take care of any change orders without a special board meeting, up to a certain amount. Mr. Marnell, based on the size of the project, what would you recommend in terms of change orders that I could execute?
I would put, I think ten thousand is a more than reasonable limit.
Do we have a motion?
I think we authorize the superintendent for change orders up to ten thousand.
Motion by Mr. Miller, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Miller?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes six zero with three absent. Anything else, Mr. Solicitor?
No, that final comment from Dr. Marnell about the change order and the fact that we, I met with the contractor and Mr. Mizwa and Mr. Marnell this morning to review the bonds and the contract, and everything was in order, it just seems like a slow getting here, but it's ready to proceed, the notice to proceed was given.
Thank you, we're excited. Citizens' comments? Seeing that, anything for anyone on the Board?
I'm just raising a question, the WCCC, last year, as I understand it, this may be to you, Dr. Marnell, or to the high school here, several of our students during the second semester go to the community college for, and I think, I, I'm just wondering, what are the pros and cons? A parent talked to me, and her feeling was that it was being discouraged by the administration or that students do this. I'm just wondering, what are the pros and cons, or whether that was in fact the intent, or, what's, what's our stance towards students the second term, or as seniors taking some classes at the community college?
We do have some students that take classes at the community college, and I'm going to ask Mr. Croftcheck and put him on the spot here to explain the intricacies of how that figures into degrading and all of those things when someone goes to WCCC during their senior year?
Well, it's not discouraged to go to take a course or a college, a lot of times, I mean, it's a question...
Dan, use the mic.
We actually have students that take classes at Penn State Fayette as well. And like our work release program, where kids, seniors, take X amount of credits, and then they are permitted to, to be released for work in the afternoon, we have students that have started going actually to Penn State Fayette and places like that. I guess it's a situational basis of a student needs so many credits back at the home school. Whether or not, if it's a question of supplanting credits, we would have to look through board policy, and it would have to be approved coursework that would meet the Pennsylvania State guidelines in terms of curriculum, so that is starting to become more commonplace actually for students taking courses outside of the, the normal high school classroom.
No, in the nineties, or at least when our kids went to school, it was never, I didn't know it was happening, and so when it was raised, and I was just trying to get some sense of, you know, or whether we, I don't know, this parent felt that it wasn't being encouraged, and sort of that they did it in spite of, but that's probably, I'm probably reading it.
I think, Mr. Miller, we absolutely encourage kids to seek higher learning, whether it's in our school or out of our school, I think the one thing Mr. Croftcheck was saying is we have to make sure, however, that, that the students meet the chapter four requirements, and so if it's ever being discouraged, it's because we have an obligation to say that you're, you're trying to do something that is going to affect your requirements, but if everything is in good standing, and you're taking extra, we certainly will do everything we can to accommodate that.
Good. Very good. Anyone on the Board have anything else? Need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second. Second by Mr. Miller, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six to zero, good night, thanks for coming.